...is taking a hands-off approach and sees it as a market, you know, it's a business, so whatever the state does, but local communities can have an influence on this and how it rolls out and I feel like it's, it really is something that deserves some thought. We regulate other commerce that has state regulations like tattoo parlors, septic tanks, tobacco, and we should really think about how we want to regulate retail marijuana, specifically how many retail establishments we want in Northampton. There's a great website created by some people in California called Getting It Right From The Start, and there's several things I hope you will consider. Number one, I feel like there should be community discussion about this because I know that voters approved it, and I'm not saying it shouldn't be legal, but just because voters approved it doesn't mean they didn't want it to be regulated and doesn't mean they didn't have an opinion about how many pot shops we want in Northampton. It's a totally cash business. There's a lot of factors to think about and I think, you know, planning boards and planning departments should be thinking about unintended consequences of new businesses coming to town. And then the other thing is I understand that the tax for medical marijuana is 2%, but if you're allowed to tax 3% and I would, I would hope that we could tax the maximum amount and that we could use it for prevention efforts because just like alcohol and other drugs, marijuana is detrimental to the developing brain and I think if we're going to be having this new substance in our midst, that we really need to think about access, that youth access, and how to prevent young people who have developing brains from getting it. And I feel like we should, you know, we've learned a lot from how tobacco was marketed to youth and it looks to me like the marijuana industry is, is following a similar path. I think it's a new business in town and it should be introduced with some careful thought and I hope that somebody in the city takes leadership on it because it doesn't seem like anybody is. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Yes ma'am.
Hi there, my name is Heather Warner and I'm a resident of Northampton. I have teenage boys and I'm also in the prevention field and public health field. And I'm here for the same reason as Lori. What we're seeing is it, it looks like a lot of our neighboring towns, Amherst, Easthampton, who are both sort of, you know, marijuana-friendly communities, you know, are really taking a close look at both the original bill, the amendment, and now the CCC's regulation of marijuana. And, you know, there's a lot to, to take in with these bills and regulations and it's a lot for cities to take in and it's also a lot for community residents to understand. And I think that a lot of people who voted for this bill, you know, did so for a lot of really, you know, good reasons, you know, social justice and equity, you know, not wanting to see arrests and, you know, all kinds of different reasons. But it is a controlled substance and there are things that communities can do and, you know, and I think that there's a lot of new issues on the table since this regulation came out. I mean, some examples are that the original bill really said that communities needed to vote in social, on-premise, you know, use, but the, the new regulation seems to imply that that's just an automatic and a given. And I know that that's going to get fleshed out more, but, you know, I think that really understanding the implications of, of social consumption and there's also this whole area in here about mixed-use locations where you could have a yoga studio that's using oils, for example, but you, it also includes, you could have a clothing store that has a little, you know, chocolate case in the back or, you know, if it's not its primary, you know, income, if it's a percentage of its income, then it can be a mixed-use place. And then it doesn't fall under any of the guidelines for being 21-plus around, there doesn't fall under the guidelines for delivery. There's also a really lax, there's a lot of actually strong regulations about how the products can be delivered, including video cameras in the back of the van or whatever and a cellphone use the entire delivery, which of course is not very feasible out here, you know, that's then monitored by the establishment and blah, 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 two drivers, and it kind of goes on like that. But, um, but then it, the mixed-use facilities don't fall under that regulation. So there's, there's a lot of sort of problems that, you know, hopefully will get ironed out, but again, it's like these are worth looking at and there's a lot of things that towns can do. You know, we can look at an upper cap. How many is too many in Northampton? What does our tourist free bring? Is it, is, do we want to be a pot destination or do we have like older tourists that bring in the bulk of our tourist money, Smith College parents or whomever, you know? So, and I'm a family person, moved here because the schools are good and because downtown is family-friendly, although there's some debate about that, there's a lot of drugs being dealt downtown. So, you know, what, what, I, I don't know that I would want my kids coming downtown and it's like this isn't the town I signed up for. So I think just hearing from the public really about what we want this to look like. It's not that we might all be opposed to having it happen, but we do want to have some say in what this is going to look like and how it's zoned. What are the hours? You know, because it's a cash-only, what does that mean? We've heard from other states that parking is a really big issue in the beginning especially, you know, and that public consumption, you know, just, it, so I just think that we as a town need to take all of these things under consideration. You know, Amherst has been proactive, they have a cap of eight. Easthampton, I think, is looking at 12. You know, Amherst added buffer areas to the ones that are included in the state's law to increase, you know, and not have it be around certain other kinds of places. Do we want it around faith communities? Do we want it around treatment centers? Where do we not want to have these, you know, appear? And we can decide that. So I just encourage everyone to take a look at these, to increase, you know, public input and thanks.
Thank you.
Can I give you some literature?
Sure.
And the Amherst website actually has a lot of materials on it too.
Thank you. I'll now call, open the hearing for site plan for four-unit SRO with program space, shared driveway by Jones Witsit Architects at 93 Locust Street, Northampton map ID 23B-30. Is there a presentation?
We have a PDF of the Jones. Good evening, I'm Henry Albin with Jones Witsit Architects. I'm here to discuss the project at the intersection of Locust Street and Hatfield Street. This is phase two of the housing development project. Phase one is currently underway and is using an existing building that already has a permit to convert into two two-bedroom apartments. That is the site that is currently on Hatfield Street. We are looking to develop the Locust Street site with a new building that includes office space on the first floor and four efficiency apartments in the back.
Is the, the current project the one directly to the west?
Directly to the west.
West, I think.
It's, it's southernmost, it's the one on...
On the corner?
Not on the corner, on Locust Street.
Yeah, where's the existing, the phase one?
Oh, the phase one is, it's an L-shaped lot. It's two adjoining lots that are L-shaped, so it's actually one back from the corner on Hatfield.
Got it, okay.
So this is just the site plan. This is the new building that will, that will be on the Locust Street lot. Access for cars will be from the Hatfield Street lot. At a previous town meeting, I think, it was discussed that that was the preference, was that to not use the existing curb cut and so we will intend to get rid of the existing curb cut on the Locust Street and have traffic slowly come in through Hatfield with a small parking lot and at the adjoining, at the location where the two sites adjoin, which is currently occupied by two garages that we intend to demolish as part of this project. The site is only 60 feet wide, so our building has attempted to minimize the amount that encroaches on setbacks to either side. Currently there are 15-foot setbacks to either side of the project due to simply the width of the building. We do have a side access for the residential units, but we are planning on putting plantings to either side of the side lots to mitigate the, the sight, sightline, sight setback issue. The stormwater system is being designed for a hundred-year flood, so up to and including a hundred-year flood, it would not use the city drainage. Above a hundred-year flood, we do, we are requesting connection to the Hatfield line for drainage purposes if we go above and beyond a hundred-year flood. But otherwise, all the stormwater will be taken care of on-site.
Just a question regarding the, on the staff's comments regarding the traffic mitigation and the proposed deal, and you walk us through that.
Sure, so the zoning requires that every project address its own incremental increase in traffic generation to a site. So this, this is not a standard residential development in that clients typically don't have the same number of vehicles as a, as a four-family or a single-family home would. However, there's office use, you know, support staff that come to the property, which is why they're building a little parking area there. So the tra, so staff recommended to sort of discuss with the applicant, instead of using a, you know, four-unit straight multifamily calculation, which would be basically one trip per unit, peak hour trip per unit, that, a similar formula that was utilized for the Bridge Street low-income or affordable housing project there be used, which is a ratio of 0.6 trips per, per unit to account for the fact that we, you have fewer, less car ownership and use of the site, yet there still would be an increase in trips generated by the use. So using that calculation, based on the formula and the zoning, it comes out to a total mitigation or payment in lieu of $2,400. The applicant was intrigued by this comparable kind of arrangement that you all approved for the Bridge Street project about maybe using that money to buy bike share memberships as a way to offset that traffic generation. So they would ask that you all consider that as a means of providing that mitigation. So, you know, it's not clear yet what the cost of the membership is, but you, if you agree on the value, then, you know, we would massage that depending on what the ultimate bike share numbers come out to be. And then they can manage that as well, since they're, they're going to be owning the property and all the, managing all the tenants on-site, so it would be easy enough for them to track that, I think.
What's the zoning on this property?
It's urban residential B. And, and John had asked the question too about why phase one wasn't part of the project or why the board didn't see that. It's an existing structure, the use is allowed by right, there were no changes to the site or the building for that piece of it, so that in and of itself didn't trigger any kind of additional reuse by the planning board. It's just this new construction plus the new parking layout is what triggered site plan approval. The use itself is allowed by right.
And the use for phase two is the same as for phase one?
Yes, it's, it's still residential use.
But it's multi, it's as if it were multifamily residential use.
Right, so it's a different kind, the reason, it's exempt from provisions of zoning under the Dover Amendments or Dover Act because educational uses are considered exempt. So we categorize this type of program that has on-site facilities and sort of educational program for people who are living in the, in the homes, fall under that exemption. So that's, so normally someone coming in just doing affordable housing, that's, even if it's a nonprofit, if it doesn't have that educational component, then it would only be allowed either through a comp permit or if the zoning allowed multifamily.
This, you were talking about putting up vegetation as a presumably visual, perhaps, sight and sound barrier along which side of that, of that structure?
Both sides.
Both sides.
So along the property lines to the tenant, to the houses on either adjacent side of the Locust Street property.
What's going to go, what, what is that going to consist of?
That is still to be determined exactly what that vegetation is. We are looking at trees and shrubbery to help with that sightline.
So again, the purpose of the vegetation is to give more privacy to the residential or what is that?
It's because we, we cannot achieve the 20-foot minimum setback that would typically be required on a side lot line with a side entrance because the site is so narrow, so we are doing that to help alleviate that issue on either side.
So that's really going to require something with some height to it so that you've got some sound and sight barrier between them?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, they, they would not be three-foot high.
I don't see, is there, is there a plan here for the landscape?
L101 on the bigger plan? And there's a fence, is there not a fence on that side, only on the east side?
There is a fence on the east side, there's, the adjacent property on the west side has a lot of dense vegetation right along that property line, but there's not currently
So as a condition, can we leave it up to them what the plantings will be, but we condition the height?
Do you have some recommendation along that line?
Yeah, I thought it was spelled out in the revised plan, but maybe we can work out.
Any schedule at bottom, I mean, it says, you know, three gallon, I don't know how, Jeff's here, I don't know how tall a three gallon...
Depends.
Dogwood is.
So, well, there, there are a couple things. First of all, there is a, the 15-foot setback is the standard setback. The requirement for a 20-foot side setback is if there is, if the units are oriented to the side. And so I'm not, I, I don't, the entrance is on the rear and the front.
There is no entrance on the rear, there, there is an entrance on the side.
So it comes in under that cor, it's in the back corner there?
That will, I'll, it's about halfway up the building on the east side with the angled wall, that's the entrance into the apartment section.
Is in there an entrance at the rear too?
No. There's entrance to storage underneath the stair and to an accessible apartment.
So I, the other side, I think the west side is not really a setback issue. The, the east side, it's at an angle, it's really up to, I think, yes, they're offering to put shrubs there and a fence, so the fence is, you know, basically the, what the zoning says is if there are, if the entrances are oriented to the side, then the setback should be slightly bigger to 20 feet unless the planning board finds that there's an alternative means to provide that same kind of privacy protection to the abiding side. So they have both a fence and shrubbery inside the fence. So given that angle of the door, it's not exactly the same type of side orientation and entrance and access that was of, that was trying to be addressed in the zoning.
Right.
So I think that, at, at any rate, you would decide whether you think this is an appropriate buffer on the side, but the, another aspect of this is it's not truly directly, I mean, this isn't the backyard of this new structure oriented towards the backyard of a, you know, the abiding structure. So I, so then you all would determine whether it, the height is an issue upon planting for those shrubs or if the combination of shrubs and the fence are enough for that side.
It's a six-foot fence and the shrubs are on the inside of the fence.
Right.
I mean, isn't the fence the peak?
Yeah.
Right.
That solves the problem.
It solves the problem on that side, but this is going to be rather intensely used, so I am wondering about the other side as well. I mean, it isn't a question of how far from the house, it's just a question of active, lots of active people in there, you know, to a greater extent than one might have anticipated.
So you absolutely have the ability to dictate, you know, the height upon planting, you could say five, seven feet, even if the shrubs they have selected don't come at that height. I mean, this, you know, these aren't really, these are really low-growing.
Yeah.
They're not really meant to be, you know, a sight, a screening.
Kind of a screen, yeah.
So absolutely, if you think it's more appropriate to have a screening, then you could indicate, you know, evergreen shrubs of X height along the western property boundary.
For this building, this building only has four residents, so it doesn't have...
But you're part of a, of a bunch of people.
The other, the other building has also four residents.
Right.
A total of eight residents between the two projects and there isn't, we aren't doing anything with public use on the west side of the building, so there's no pathways, no access back there. It's actually, that's where our stormwater retention is, is on that side of the building. So there isn't going to be very much activity to the west side of this property.
Is that why there is no fence there?
That is one of the reasons, yes. We are certainly amenable to putting a fence there if that is what is best for the current owners of that property.
Are we even talking?
Actually, in the audience.
So we'll be talking to them soon.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that necessarily needs a fence, I just don't have a sense it's, those are sweet ferns along that side and how...
That's not going to do a whole lot.
And the dogwood isn't either, that's just a shrub, it's not a tree.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so that's something to think about.
Right, yep.
Any other questions on the board before I open it for public comment?
Just another follow-up on a staff comment about lighting, about perimeter lighting or spill over to the, there's no photometric.
We do have a, I, I'm, I'm sorry that there isn't a photometric included, we have had a photometric done. We have a minor amount of spill over at the back of the parking lot of 0.1 foot candles onto the adjacent property, which we're currently, we're, but otherwise there's no spill over and we're still, we're still tweaking the photometrics for the site.
And you know, just again, based on the, I don't know if, have they, does the applicant seen the staff comments?
Yes, I sent, so I had originally there, I think there was an updated photometric or spec sheet sent as the second part of the packet. So they did see those comments. I'm not sure, one question I had actually about the photometric assumption was, did it take into account the fence? Because I think there's still, you're still proposing bollards, right? There's nothing...
Yes, we are proposing bollards.
So I'm not sure if really there would be spill over if you have a fence at the back. So I'm not sure the, maybe the lighting, the person who did the lighting plan didn't really account for the fence. I don't know.
And there's just a question on the temperature too.
Yeah.
The color temperature, I don't know if you...
They, they returned the plan saying that they, they're going to use that, but I still think it makes sense to put it in the, as a condition so that it's clear.
Yeah, we want to make sure that we provide the appropriate comfort of lighting.
Okay, we'll hear from the public on this project. Yes ma'am.
I have a question about the lighting.
You have to come up to the podium. And please identify yourself.
I have a question about the lighting. Is it going to be motion sensors or is it going to be constant lighting?
If you could identify yourself.
Oh, I'm Rose Clark.
Okay.
And I'm the mother of the owner of the property on 97...
And your, and your address?
My address is 5 Lily Pond Lane, Goshen.
Got it, okay. So you're concerned about the lighting and whether it's going to be motion sensor or...
Yeah, or it's going to be lit constantly.
Would the applicant like to address that?
So hi, my name is Phil Ringwald, I'm the executive director for Dial Cell Youth and Community Services, the owner for the project. So we had not yet decided whether that was going to be a motion sensor or continuous and some of our other projects we've used timers to control when the lights are on and off and that was something we were planning on having additional conversations on to figure out what made the most sense for the site and the surrounding area. So we're, we're open to suggestions on that.
What does the labor report?
The, the neighbor to the north of the, the site didn't seem to have an opinion either way. They had motion sensors on the house that's in existence now and haven't had any problems with that. Have not yet gotten the opinion from the neighbor on the east and we have not taken the opinion on that.
She's right there.
Mark Christine, so I've had a chance to check on what makes the most sense and if we want to have certain ones on a, on motion or certain ones, you know, on timer and what that timer could be, but we're very, we're able to make those decisions in a way that makes, that works for everyone, everyone, so.
I have questions about the fences, you were talking about fences and bushes and I, I understand that some are there already? Did you, is that part, on the, like...
So on the western side, so between 97 Locust and 93 Locust, there, there's some pretty heavy vegetation there right now, which makes it very hard to actually see through from the adjacent lot into that property, which is also one of the reasons, in addition to less traffic in that side of the building, where we didn't originally spec a fence. And, you know, I was talking with Rose Marie before the meeting... And, you know, I, I was talking with Rose Marie before the meeting and all, um, you know, again, you know, if that seems like that a fence there would be beneficial, it's certainly something we'd be happy to accommodate in the plans. If I answered that question.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am? If I could just clarify, I think we also received a letter.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And, were you going to share that? Would you?
Oh, um, I can read it. I, I have some copies.
Everyone received, I just wanna, you know, that everyone did receive it.
Everyone did receive.
Yeah, so we got it. So, I don't think we need to read it, but I, I wanted to make sure, 'cause I knew that was mentioned in the, in the, uh, the letter itself, so, okay.
Yeah.
So, everyone received it prior to the meeting and had a chance to look at?
Uh, that was my understanding.
Okay, okay, thank you. Other comments from the public on this project?
Can I ask a question on the lighting?
Sure.
Was the intent for the lighting, whether it's motion or timer to, uh, turn off at a certain time? Or, you know, usually we regulate after, this is, this is weird, 'cause it's office and residential, but typically on an, a, a commercial building, the lights are turned off an hour after close of business or something like that. And so, uh.
Uh, as Phil mentioned, we haven't fully discussed the timing of the lights at the, yet. Um, it's certainly something that we will be discussing, um, I think the lights.
I can just jump into, yeah, so, I, I think we might be looking at different parts of the lighting system as far, in terms of the lights that are on like the Locust Street side that are more in line with the office and program space versus the, the, the lights that are in the more residential air section of, of the property, um, providing some additional, um, security for the tenants.
Can I just clarify if, if, sorry, um, so if it isn't, if there isn't, um, if those details aren't worked out and we're not conditioning them or approving the plan with those specific details, does it mean that we've, we've lost the opportunity to do that? Or, okay, so.
I mean, if you think it's important, do it now in a condition and they, it sounds like they would be amenable for, um, you know, obtaining that direction. But, um, I think it makes sense for, you know, certainly, parking lot lights probably don't need to be on all night long. Um, and resi- you know, most houses have, um, lights just at the doors, so, um, you might wanna think about those kinds of things.
Going back to, to, to Mark's comment, I mean, given this area, I mean, there is a commercial strip just literally in the next block and it would be governed by the, you know, the normal rules, we have about an hour after closing and all, and all that. Would not this be governed by the same?
Well, this is a residential district and it's technically a residential use, um, so, there aren't, and I'll say too, with the commercial districts, there's not a standard for every single commercial use with, it's all, it's typically only happens if, um, the, uh, project is coming into the board for, uh, approval, then you might apply a condition for that. So, it's not across, uniform across the board as to how lighting is dealt, um, on a, at a commercial level.
So, now we're going to test this question. If we, if we left it unmentioned in our, whatever we end up doing, it would then be just governed by normal residential conditions in that area?
Right, but there's no standard, right, right. People can leave their lights on all night if they chose.
That would be the worst case.
Well, that's what I would, I would just, you know.
The parking lot lights are the least residential components.
Right.
I think we need to include whatever is decided and if they haven't decided it yet, then it needs to hold until it's decided so we can include it. But maybe they can work that out now and.
Or you can just decide what you think is appropriate, given the location.
Right.
And if that doesn't work, they can always, you know, if they go through the details and they decide that doesn't work, they can always come back for a request for.
And so, that would do the same for the landscaping between the, one to the west, yeah. I think we should do that too.
So, it sounds like there may be still some more discussion about us and neighbors and stuff, so maybe we put something in and then if it needs to change, it comes back to us.
So, the thing is that he would work with the, the neighbors and then come out with something, that's right, is?
Well, I, I think what, I think what Tess is suggesting is that we put something in and say, this is what we expect. And if something other than that works out, then they need to come back and say, well, it's not what you asked for, but it's what is amenable to the neighbors if they want something other than, so I, I think what, I think what we're saying is we need to put something in just.
Yeah, I understand that.
Kind of as a, a marker. If something else gets worked out, they can come back and say, well, we didn't do that, but we did this and everyone agrees to it. So, I, I think we wanna put something in, kind of as a, a, a baseline.
About the lady.
Yes, right, yeah.
She has some understand or ways to discuss that.
Other questions from the board? Anyone else in the public? Okay.
I just, I don't remember if I, I don't know, you know, if there is some concern about the traffic and how many people are constantly coming off them. I don't remember.
No.
I don't think that was the, yeah, that wasn't.
It was just about lighting and privacy.
Yeah, that seemed to be the primary.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Move to call the public comment? Favor?
Yep.
Seems like we have mostly privacy issues. No, you guys can sit, have a seat, sorry. It seems like we have, um, but either in the lighting or the plant, kind of privacy type issues that we.
The plantings, it seems the applicant is, uh, agreeable to a fence if, if the abutters want it or certainly the planting along that line, it is, there is some, some growth on that side. But that growth isn't theirs and who knows what happens in the future and so forth, so something I think should be done and I don't know if the fern planting is.
I think some kind of evergreen planting that's high enough to, or that can be, come high enough to be, uh, uh, a, a sound and visual barrier ought to be included in that, 'cause I think anything that's a fern is gonna die back in the winter time.
Probably ferns, just 'cause there's, depending on the time of day, there's not a lot of light there.
I was, I was actually wondering whether we, whether we would go to, having it, have the fence match the other side. I mean, it's good enough for one side. I mean, I understand the orientation of the building, but, um, it is a pretty tight area. Whether we would wanna go ahead and go and essentially have it match on, on both sides.
Um, I think the, I'm just gonna pull out the, um, the, I don't, it was in the secondary plan, more detail on the, um, stormwater, um, the, the garden, the swell is on that side. Um, it may be, it may be the appropriate, um, fit that would be just one or the other, given that there may not be enough.
Depth, yes, right.
Along that property line. So, um, I mean, there is maybe, uh, it's actually maybe about five feet, I think, from the edge of the, the top of the swell to the property line. So, I think it might be tricky to fit both evergreen tree or shrub and a fence.
Oh, yes, I agree.
But I just don't understand, I mean, if they're putting the fence in, why would we, why do we care what the?
Well, not on that side.
It's on the top. Yeah. Then just put a fence in and be done with it.
Yeah, I think that's.
Seems like a no-brainer. Fence. Do it. Neighbors are better with fences.
So, assuming we went with the fence, uh, the other issue was the lights and I, and I'd propose, you know, on the, on the residential side to let them work it out with something that's, they're only gonna do something that, I can't see them turning, you know, the lights on and leaving them on all night, um, for their own residence. And so, may, but maybe the parking lot lights.
Yeah.
Um, have those turn off at a certain time or be on timer. Yeah, I mean, you, I would think, as I said, those are the least residential.
Right.
So, yeah, the parking lots lights off at nine and everything else, they'll just, it's assumed they'll work with the, the abutters in good faith.
And worst case scenario though, if that doesn't happen, like if we don't have something, something else defined on the, for the rest of it?
Yes, I don't know how do you, yeah.
I don't know what we would say.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what you mean, you say the rest of it?
Like lighting outs, away from the parking.
Oh, I see, okay, okay.
And I guess on the plan itself, I'm trying to just find exactly how many light fixtures were proposed on that, along.
Yeah, there's not. I, I guess on that side, I mean, then you're going to the residential side that.
That's, um.
I mean, if I, if I have a house, I wouldn't leave my lights on all the time.
Yeah.
Right.
So, I, so I, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna swing the other way too far either. I, I think, you know, I think Mark makes a good point about the, the least residential part is the parking lot.
Yeah.
I guess I get a little more concerned about.
But the parking lot is just, that's a bollard behind a fence anyway, already.
Right.
So, it's already not necessarily the most problematic.
Right.
Right.
I mean, we could say, we could say around the house or structure, um, you know, could be on a timer to say nine o'clock and the parking lots like go off and then it's on motion sensor after that. So, if somebody comes in at night and they're going in the back door, the light pops on, but it's not, doesn't stay on all the time.
Yeah, and if we were to just say, you know, all lights on a motion sensor and then they talk about it and decide they wanna come back and make a tweak to that. At least that's like something agreed that we say.
Okay, you write it down, you write it down.
Yeah, this is yours, if you're writing it down.
You wrote it down, go on.
I just want. Our, I'm, I'm hesitating, I just wanna make sure we're not creating a restriction and, and kinda like, that, would they be the only ones restricted to this and the rest of the neighborhood doesn't have to?
Right, yeah, right.
I mean, I, I wanna make sure we don't, you know, we don't go either way, that, well, oh, we're gonna, I know we're trying to accommodate those in the neighborhood, but. We wanna do something, I think, but we wanna do something, I mean, either way.
But it isn't a single-family residence. It just isn't.
No, but those in the neighborhood could leave their light post on if they wanted to all night.
Right, right.
Is this really, I mean, doesn't seem like it's something that's, I mean, if you have a development, why would you wanna leave the lights on all the time?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, it's that one thing where we're trying to, you know, I don't think they're gonna burn, they're not wanting to run up their electricity. I don't think, but, so.
Just to mitigate the mental conflict.
But I, but it's, but also, as we said in the beginning, in, in the absence of anything, you know, we could be creating a future problem that, you know, maybe we could try to avoid.
But if you walk that through, I guess I'm going the other way to your last point. If we don't, if we just say on the commercial side of it, parking lot lights off at nine and leave it, the rest up to them and they decide to leave their front light on all night and it drives the neighbors crazy. I've got people on my street that leave the light on all night and I have to pull the shade down, 'cause it comes right in, drives me crazy. But that's what it is, so that's so.
That's a good point, yeah.
And, and, um, so if the neighbors can, then I guess the, and it, they should be able to too. That doesn't mean they will, but.
So, there, I mean, basically at the front and then the side entrance, that's where the lights are on the building.
Yeah.
And then, and that's, so that's only on the eastern side of the property. So, there's, basically at the entrances are the lights, under that porch. Um, and then the parking lot would be sort of the two lights, one right behind the structure and then one at the back fence. So, those, if those get turned off at nine, um, then the only other lights are really at those entrances.
Okay.
So, even the, the parking lot lights, they're bollards, so you can't see them, but if they're on late, you have that glow.
Right.
That's annoying, so that goes away at nine and everything else is.
I think so.
Okay, there you go, there you go, there you go.
All right, okay. Tess, you're writing this down?
I'm writing it down.
And so, then the other, only other thing is the traffic mitigation? So, basically, we would just agree on the dollar value and let them work it out as far as the bike share?
Yeah, I mean, the way I suggested it would be, so, uh, well, there's two. One is DPW also asked, because they have a stormwater system, that a stormwater maintenance agreement be, um, approved by the city and recorded prior to issuance of building permit. Um, the other piece of it is prior to issuance of the CO, that, um, they'll show how they're meeting their traffic mitigation requirements of up to twenty-four hundred dollars. So, we can work that at a staff level, but they just need to show that at the CO, they've got a mechanism to do that. Um, and then, yeah, and so then I also have, um, the lighting not to exceed three thousand K. Fence, um, should be installed on the western lot line and parking lot lights off at nine.
Yep.
Um, can I say something or raise something?
Sure.
Traffic mitigation wise? And, and this came up, I think, when we were talking about Bridge Street a little bit too and the, and the bike share and the difference between mitigating by providing individual people, individual residents' memberships versus something that is like attached to the site? So, I don't know if it's feasible or if they can think about it, but in terms of the, the entire Pioneer Valley Bike Share system, you know, the system is as good as where the, the locations are. Is there a scenario where that traffic mitigation money is used to actually create a, a stop? You know, like a bike share station that, and that money is used to maintain a station there so that the people who are, whomever those people are, you know, if, if these are gonna be shorter-term residents or something, that it's the site that's benefiting from being a bike share location as opposed to people having memberships?
So, um, well, there's a station across the street at Cooley Dickinson, so, um.
Forget everything I said.
Never mind.
Never mind.
Terrific.
But it was a good idea.
Like I say, I mean, just the idea of kind of having the traffic mitigation, you know, if it's bike share related, related to the site is.
Okay, I'm glad to entertain the motion.
Uh, motion to approve site plan for a four-unit SRO at ninety-three Locust Street, North Hampton map ID twenty-three B dash thirty with the following conditions, um, that a stormwater maintenance agreement be recorded at the registry, that the all lighting be, uh, temperature of three thousand K, uh, that a fence be installed on, that is the west side, right? West side of the property, that lighting on the plan in the parking area, all lights go off at nine P.M. And that prior to CO, the applicant is able to show traffic mitigation, um, through bike share or other means.
Checking by hand, favor?
Thank you. I'm gonna now call the seven-thirty hearing of continuation of forty R smart growth permit for sixty thousand square foot, fifty-three unit, three-story residential building by the building of Old Landers Drive, North Hampton, map ID thirty-one C dash one-seven. Um, I don't know whether the board wants to look at a site plan again for reference. Um, I think the last time we left, the, the only thing that we were waiting for was a stormwater permit, which was issued this afternoon. Um, the conditions, um, I think, you know, we reviewed the conditions that are amenable to, um, those, those regulations. So, I don't know if there's any other discussion or questions. I'm happy to put a site plan up or go through the plans if the board prefers.
It's probably still on the desktop, Jeff. It's probably still on the desktop.
There's no presentation, 'cause there's no public, or no presentation needed.
Right, 'cause we were, though, I, though I, I do see there was a note about more detail on the timing and assurances for open space dedication and trail construction? As well as the details of how the project is meeting the stormwater requirements, yeah. So, Carolyn, the permit has been issued?
Uh, yes, this afternoon.
This time, can you slide it on there so I can grab it, or you can email it to me?
So, again, this is lot thirteen A. Which is the norababy part of the North Campus. So, when we left off last time after the presentation, they did a walk-through.
So when we left off last time, after the presentation, they did a walkthrough on the civil side and the architectural side and there, we had a couple people voice their support, we didn't have any objections, we didn't have any major conditions. Jeff, have you seen the possible conditions from the staff?
Uh, no, I'm aware of some of them, but I don't, yeah, I haven't seen the...
I don't think any of the issues changed since the last time I sent it. I just sort of formulated the recommended conditions based on both what they were, had suggested about, you know, mostly it was about the tree protection, which is standard conditions, that they need to show that before, and it needs to be inspected before site work, and then following, before CO, make sure that all that tree replacement that was identified in the plan be completed. And then it's still not entirely clear precisely what the, what the phasing of that open space dedication and the trail connection will be, but I think that will start to gel as time moves forward. So I think a condition that just says they need to show how they're going to do that by, because they presented that they're going to give it to the city. So I don't, I personally, from a staff perspective, don't have a problem with you all issuing it conditional upon them performing that and short of being able to perform it exactly when they want their CO, they can set up some other means to do that that gives them a little bit more time.
The staff comments talk about a performance guarantee, you mean a performance bond?
Well, it could be any, so they could choose whatever it is. It could be a bond, it could be a letter of credit, it could be a covenant restriction or something. Mass development has done a couple of different, has opted a couple of different ways to address open space on pre, on other parcels that have been acceptable to the board. So I don't want to predetermine what that would be.
Right, okay.
I want to leave it up to them to pitch something for the board to accept at the time, if it's necessary.
It does say, if the trail connector is not built, why wouldn't it be built?
I don't have any reason.
Just trying to see if we're trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist. Just in case.
There's a question about coordinating with a cohousing.
Okay, all right.
So, you know, one, you know, it hasn't been quite defined who's going to get there first to build it.
Okay, all right.
So it's only just making sure we're closing that, tying that up in a nice little package so that it...
So it's really, if the trail connector is not built at the time of completion of the project, what's going to happen?
Right.
Because it's going to get built at some point.
Right, if you show us how that's going to happen.
Okay, got it.
Can I ask one more question on the permanent protection or deeding the open space to the city? Does the city ever have, does the city have a preference or would the city rather that it be deeded or just...
Yes, but we can dictate what they, so they've offered on various occasions to give that open space on the north, you know, on the outside to the city and that's always been the intention, but, yeah.
But we have to just, yeah, say either one.
Okay.
Is that done with an actual deed or like an easement?
No, if they give it to the city, it would be a full, yeah, decental ownership and transfer.
Second.
All in favor? Any other questions, comments from the board?
No, I think it's a great project.
Yeah.
In many ways, so I think it would be nice for the campus and a nice use of the space and I don't see any downside to it at all.
Someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve smart growth permit for community builders at Olander Drive, North Hampton, MAP ID 31C-17 with the following conditions, prior to any site work, applicant must install tree protection measures in accordance with ANSI 300. Second, prior to issuance of CO, all tree replacement must be completed. Prior to issuance of CO, if trail connector is not built, applicant must show through some performance guarantee or other mechanism how and when it will be completed. Prior to issuance of a CO, open space shall be permanently protected or deeded to the city. And prior to issuance of a CO, the applicant shall record a supercoesement or maintenance document for the first 75 feet of driveway north of the intersection of Olander and Ford Crossing in a form approved by the city for the shared driveway planned for access to the cohousing project to the east.
Seconded by Ann. All in favor? All closed. Congratulations.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. You can't possibly have anything else to add. Yeah, but A and R.
Yeah, thank.
This is a really simple one. It's on the corner of Barrett Street and Jackson Street and it's just a transfer of a sliver of land from one property to the other. So it's not creating any new lots or anything for the city.
This way?
This is north. So Jackson Street School is over here, this is, was that right? Yeah, something like that, Barrett Street. So it's this corner, there's just a literally, like, what is it, two feet, a two-foot sliver on one side giving it to this property where it looks like there's...
Yeah, what does that two feet give?
Well, there's a, there's a patio here, my guess is there's...
Somebody built.
Now that I've built on your property... This one was to beg for forgiveness inside.
Motion. Tess, seconded by Ann, all in favor?
Yep.
All closed. Tess and Ann.
I have a question for the board. Do we have to stay in session? Can we go out, can we close or should, do we have to do this since we're all together?
Well, if it's for the board, it's harder than me.
I've got a question, and this has come up a few times recently regarding public comment, and this may just be my own thing, you know, when we are in public, open for public comment, I feel like the public's here, they get to keep talk, you know, I'm resident, reticent to cut them off. That means we sometimes have very long meetings and we don't gain a whole lot of more information. My question is, I don't, I don't quite understand why if we close public comment, we can no longer ask factual questions of the applicant. That's the part, because if we could close public comment, I mean, often I think we're keeping it open so we don't lose our contact with the applicant. It's not necessarily because we're getting a bunch more information, it's because we're afraid that we won't then be able to get information we actually do want, or factual information.
Your concern isn't so much with somebody who speaks long in the beginning, it's rather with somebody who comes back and says the same thing over again.
As they're here, you know, and so, yeah, and I think we often keep it open so we don't lose our access to the applicant, which I, I consider like factual information.
But there's no distinction in the law made, right, between...
Right, I think there's a concern about favoritism, well, you're still talking to them, but you're not, you know, and so I, that's just, I don't know if there's anything to be done about that, but that's, you know, that's the...
Just put like a giant clock behind you.
Counting, counting down.
Your question is...
Could, why is it that we can...
If you're asking factual questions of the applicant, can you do that in a closed public environment?
Oh, right. No, because, so the public hearing is for everybody to hear from the applicant and also a chance for the people in the public to respond and speak. And, and so that is, all of that is considered public hearing and then you need to deliberate on everything that you've heard. If you're, but limit your public hearing to just one side of the issue. So you may be thinking you're trying to gain factual information, but that, but there may be people in the public saying, well, wait a second, my facts are...
That's not fact.
So it's equal time in a sense? Okay, all right, I mean, and that, you know, and I guess that's the, it's a public hearing, it's not public comment, it's a public hearing. And so everyone, while, okay, that, I mean, I think of it that way will help, but...
Once we close public comment, though, are we allowed to reopen it? Like if we are like, oh, shoot, we shouldn't have closed it, can we, are we allowed to?
Yeah, we need...
It's tricky, I mean, technically, I think you could, if it gets to be too long, I mean, then people might leave because they're saying, oh, public hearing's over, I'm going to leave, and then you reopen it.
Oh, right. Which again could be seen as giving favoritism.
Right, then that person wasn't notified that you were going to...
Because it says the public hearing is now and once you've closed it, then...
It's also because we talk about it and they learn from us, too.
Right, yeah, right. It's just, I think it's more about the communication with the applicant and, you know, and I think we often keep it open because we don't want to hamstring ourselves.
It's a technical question or something, we want to have that availability.
And I guess I think, again, I think of that as like factual information, but still it's a public hearing.
Yes, but your facts and my facts may not be the same facts.
You know, the way that you could, if you're concerned about, you know, the, if there are lots of people that have come for the hearing and you've narrowed it down and you just need to have points of clarification, you can state that, you know, that you're not going to take any more public comment unless it's based on new information that hasn't been presented, so that it's not the same people getting up saying something in a different way, but really the same thing.
Then you have to begin to negotiate with those people and that can have its own trickiness.
But if you have a layperson on the audience and he or she has her own, she needs to speak up, she wants to, so...
Right, like I said, if someone's here, I am hesitant to not allow someone the opportunity to, if they came, they waited their turn, and so I don't want to curtail public comment, but I also want to make sure that we're, you know, we're trying to move ahead and, but then again, I don't want us to cut ourselves off from information that we might need, which I think is why...
I mean, you might say at the, at the end of the, you know, we try to say, if you share somebody's opinion, just get up and say, I agree with Mrs. Jones 100% and get your name on the record and then step aside. But then at the end of that process, you might say, we're not going to close public comment, but I, but we're going to start deliberations and if, we may have a question for either the applicant or somebody else and we're looking for information, but that's not, we're not trying to open...
We're not starting all the...
Right. And just give everybody a little...
At least hopefully let people say, hey, we're trying to do this in a structured...
Right.
Okay.
So let's talk about the previous meeting, right, the board meeting, was quite long, right?
The one...
Which one?
The one two weeks ago.
Yeah, two weeks ago, wasn't that long?
I wasn't at that one.
It was the one in December was very long, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was two, it was two meetings ago, yeah. I think it was two meetings ago that was...
Three hours, something.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think I have to be ca, you know, cautioned because when the others, the public come here, they want to say something and it should be...
Right, and we don't want to curtail that, it's just trying to manage it so that everybody, you know, and we get out of here at a reasonable hour and all those good things.
And are we, we're not prohibited necessarily, or maybe we are, from like providing, as a board, like providing sort of like, like 10 things to know before you show up at a planning board meeting, like here's how public comment works, here's, you know, like, like I remember like when I first came on, I remember like when I was starting, I was like, oh, let's make videos about like how to go to a public meeting, like that would be the worst video ever. Yeah, there are just like a couple of things that people might, because I think even sometimes people are throwing like which microphone and like how do I identify myself, like, you know, so like, I mean, I'd be happy to like do something really easy that's like...
I think Mark makes a good point about, you know, especially, you know, we know when there's going to be, you know, when you walk in and the room is packed. Buckle up and we're, and I think maybe it's like setting some of those parameters, like, hey, this would be helpful, you know, but, you know...
Would it be heavy-handed if in a situation like this where sometimes we know before we even get out of our car to walk up or that the room's going to be full?
Right.
In an instance like this, you just have an eight and a half by 11 sitting on each seat that just says, okay, couple guidelines, thank you for coming here.
Here's the basis.
The city council does, right?
This is, this is what's going to happen.
Or some of the committees or something?
I think they're going to have signed up on stuff.
Again, I think, you know, I think usually when we try and let people know...
Write that down.
You've got a comment, make it, if you just agree with that comment, don't, you know, you don't have to reiterate, just say, I mean, so I maybe, you know, again, we can, I can just try and remember to remind people, hey, it's clear that we have a lot of people here, lots of people want to make a point, but we don't need to make the same point over and over, try and be respectful and, you know, I mean, I don't...
And you and I can make a video about it.
I would like to see that. I'll fund that video.
I'm not sure what that says about either one of you.
This is a question, is this, was this actually pertinent to us? Will this be pertinent to us?
Um, this, the mayor is going to introduce zoning language to the city council relative to that, so there are a lot of issues here that are outside land use issues, they're more board of health or actually policy that's beyond, not land use, but political policies like apps and things like that. So you will see an ordinance coming.
And we will see applicants wanting to build, start on something.
If it's a due, if it's due condition.
I mean, it will come across our radar at some point.
Right, right. Right, so you'll, you'll hold a public hearing on the zoning changes for...
Kidding, that was a joke.
Sam, can you confirm or deny that what I don't know? So on that note, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will be adjourned.
Ann, motion, Mark seconded, all in favor? Thank you.